Page of allegiance and I would ask a hero of Newberry County, in my opinion, Danny Gillum passed away earlier this week. His services will be on Saturday, so would you remember his family as you pray for, sir?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for waking us up this morning. And dear heavenly Father, give us the strength to continue to go as we make these decisions for Newberry County in the best interest of this county and in this state. Continue to bless those that are suffering from COVID, Omicron, all these different viruses that's taken effect on us. Touch them, Lord, and make them well. Keep the kids in school safe, Lord. Let's go back to what is best and let everyone take care of everyone.
Yes.
Dear heavenly Father, continue to bless us as we keep going and bless the Gillum family, dear Lord, as they've lost a head soldier.
Yes.
Dear heavenly Father, give them the strength to continue on and bless them as they continue to go on. Dear heavenly Father, these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would certainly like to thank all of you for being here tonight. We got a nice little break in the weather. It looks like we're between storms, so we'll continue to monitor that. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands except Mr. Hip. Mr. Hip, would you give us a voice vote so you can? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I saw his head nodding, so it is unanimous. Item number two is additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? None. Is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands. And Mr. Hip showed his hand as well, so we will call that unanimous. Item number three is ordinance number 122921, an ordinance for redistricting of Newberry County Council based on the 2020 census. This would be our public hearing, and so we declare this our public hearing. Is there anyone that is here to speak at the public hearing in reference to this redistricting? Did you have anything additionally for us?
Chairman, I would only offer if anyone wishes to look at the map that is posted on our website.
Okay. All right. Hearing no one's, having signed up, no one coming forward, I would, if there's no objection, declare the public hearing closed at this point. Public hearing is now closed. We sent out for you to make sure you had reviewed those districts prior to coming into tonight. There are several options for us. We could move forward to third hearing tonight, or we could postpone this until the second meeting of next month if you wanted to have more time to review those. So is there a motion by council as to which way you would like to proceed?
I've had the most changes and I've just assumed to go ahead and call for the reading because I've looked at it and went over what's been done to my district.
Then I'm going to accept that as a motion to have third reading. Is there a second? Reverend, Honorable Reverend Curry is second. Is there discussion? Everybody satisfied, happy? Had a chance to review it? I'm seeing all the head shakes. Then we'll call the question. All in favor of this being third reading by show of hands? And opposed likewise, it carries unanimously. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, just as a post note, since it's gotten third reading, what shows there now is redistricting draft one. That will be changed to final.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I, we have now ordinance number, I'm sorry, item number four, ordinance 01, 0122, an ordinance to authorize the grant of an easement Newberry Electric Cooperative for the purpose of locating an electric transmission line in McCarroll County Commerce Part Two located on Highway 773. For the record, Councilman Shealy has presented me with a memorandum of conflict of interest, and so he is going to excuse himself. While we have deliberations of that, we would, is there a motion of counsel on this item? We're going to get some additional information, but we still have to get a motion. So we have a motion by Mr. Councilman Reader, second by Councilman Airwood. All right, we're going to turn over to our Economic Development Director who I believe has some information for us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Newberry Electric Cooperative originally approached me in December with a request to get this item on the agenda. At that time, they believed that it was necessary to bring electric service to Day Young, the newest member of our industrial community. Late last week, Newberry Electric Cooperative had a meeting with Day Young and with their contractor, and they have found a better way, a better approach that does not necessitate traversing Newberry County property. So Newberry Electric Cooperative thanks you for your consideration, but respectfully request that this item be removed from the agenda. They no longer need this request. Mr. Tocqueville has some information on what is the possible best remedy to remove this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what I would recommend, you've already had a motion for second reading, second, that I would recommend that when you call the question, that everybody vote against it, not in favor of it. The reason I'm suggesting you do that is because it's already had first reading, so it's out there in our records. The only way to really change that is to defeat it at second reading. The co-op has no objection to that, as Mr. Farmer stated. So when you call the question, everybody should not vote in favor, but should vote against it. And hopefully, everybody will vote against it. It'll be defeated, and then when it shows up on our official records, it'll show that it did not get past second reading and it's done.
Okay. Any questions about the process?
I don't have a question about the process. I would like our minutes to reflect the reason for it being voted against by council and that being at the co-op's request.
Ms. Phyllis, can you handle that for us?
Yeah.
She'll make it. She, she said the public comments related to it will be part of it, so we will have what they told us. Okay? Then we call the question. All in favor by show of hands? All opposed by show of hands? It is defeated unanimously. Okay, update on the capital project sales tax.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The update on the CPST is that staff did meet with the engineers and gave them the 10 projects that council approved last time we were together. And so they are off and running on that, and they understand the timeline that we're working under. And the only other comment on CPST is that we've got two projects, the amphitheater and Goleman High School, that it's been proposed that we're cosponsored with the city, and staff has raised several questions that have been unanswered. And so over the next couple of weeks, we probably need to set up some individual meetings with anybody interested in those cosponsorships and try and get on paper sort of an outline of what the county's role is and what's expected of staff. I certainly don't want to overcommit staff who's already carrying a big, big heavy load, and so we want to kind of get some answers to some questions and figure out what exactly our role is in those partnerships. Well, hopefully, we can reach out and create a couple of meetings and get some clarity from council on that.
And as, as I understand that, as, as, so everybody's clear, including the public, those clarifications are more of operating after construction, who's going to be responsible for what areas, those kind of things. Is that correct?
Correct. Sort of ongoing funding questions, operational demands on, on staff in particular, what, what, like I said, I don't want to overcommit or commit us to something staff doesn't have capacity to do, so we need to get some, some clarity on what our role is.
Any questions for our county administrator?
Would I be considered a conflict since I'm on that board?
It would be better, Mr. Reader, if you recuse yourself from those discussions. I don't know that it's an actual conflict, but the perception may be that it would be a conflict, so my advice would be avoid the perception.
Any other questions? Any comments, direction that we wanted to give as a vote council? Hearing none, we'll move to agenda item number six, the proposed council committee redistricting. Mr. Iglesias, are you going to speak to us? I mean, committee restructuring? I didn't have my glasses on. All those R words look the same when they're blurry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It's the time of year where committees and committee appointments are on your mind, I'm sure, and I met with the chairman, vice chairman, and discussed sort of some streamlining of counts of committees. And so we just put in the briefing document in your agenda packet that we were proposing four committees with this executive committee kind of being a catch-all where anything could go to that committee if it doesn't fall in the purview of the other three committees. So it would go from five committees to four committees, so administratively, that's helpful for streamlining and for scheduling, and then it also gives us some real clear, we can focus on, on a few things and do those things well instead of trying to do everything as a group. So that's, our proposal includes public safety, finance, economic development, and executive committees.
Did you all have a chance to review those that were sent out? Do you want some more time to review those, or would you want to vote on those tonight?
I would like to know what's in, in each one. I mean, we combine some things.
I think that's wise. Could we just take this as information and maybe try to get a better listing of what would be included in each committee and have it at our next meeting?
It's, that's certainly your prerogative, and we, we put on the agenda that the first two committee meetings will reschedule to give us time to kind of figure this out. But if there's any questions, we can do it now or later and, and talk about that, but...
That's not, not opposing it. I'm, I'll far streamline it, but I'd like to know where some of the other committees went to that, you know...
Did you explain what, what the changes were or where things went?
Absolutely.
That might help us out a little bit.
So public safety and courts in our discussion, we don't have a lot of court issues, and it's really in the purview of the court and the clerk. So certainly, if there was an issue, we could bring it to executive committee, but there doesn't seem to meet, be a great demand on, or need for that committee, that portion of that committee. So that was the public safety and courts committee, so we just dropped that to public safety and keep that one because there is a need for that, and there's been a demand and a use for committees to discuss policy issues around public safety. Certainly, fire service is something we're going to be talking about a lot, and that committee should stay in place because that's a discussion and conversation we're going to have to, you know, utilize the committee for. Public works and, and planning, we kept, actually, we eliminated that thinking that either finance would, would absorb that if it's public works and it requires, you know, money, that the finance committee could consider that, or if it's a policy issue, the executive committee could handle that. On the planning and zoning side, the feedback I got was that that's really an economic development type of thing, and it used to be, I think, at one point, brought to economic development from what I understand. So we just eliminated public works and planning and felt like that could be absorbed into finance or executive committee. And then personnel and intergovernmental relations, the information I got was the intergovernmental relations committee isn't something that we've utilized in the past, and personnel is, the only need for a personnel committee would be to discuss policy issues like change to the handbook. So that could be brought to the executive committee, and there's no need for that, or the intergovernmental relations. And then economic development, we've got a lot of activity there, so we want to keep that one in place. And finance, obviously, there's a lot of activity there, want to keep that one in place. That was the reasoning for the recommendation. We also discussed going down to two committees, and that could, that could be finance committee and executive committee, but that's a big leap from where we are now.
That's a little too much there. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the four as, as presented.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor that we accept those four as presented. Is there a second? Second by Reverend Curry? Honorable Reverend Curry, I forget to throw that on there. Is there discussion?
I would like them listed out, just sent to us, listed out what comes under what.
Just give us a list of what's broke down into.
Because we have to direct people a lot of times, you know, to, let's go to this, this group or...
And if you, if you adopt it tonight, we'll, we'll make that list and we'll plug it into the calendar that you already adopted, and then we'll, the chairman will make his appointments once we have it. So if we put it off, those appointments will be put off as well. But if we adopt it tonight, then we'll work on the calendar, and then the chairman will make those appointments. We'll get rolling on committee meeting.
All right, thank you.
Now, with the dropping of the different committees, will, will each committee that's left, will they still meet quarterly, or will they meet more often?
So right now, the council adopted a, a calendar that's quarterly meetings.
Right.
But I'm certainly open, I think we're going to have some activity, so I'm open to adding some meetings. It'll be the chair, the chair of each committee's prerogative to schedule an extra meeting.
Could start out at quarterly, and if that committee needed to meet more often, you could have more call meetings.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, I know we're, we're anxious to get an economic development committee meeting together because we've got a lot of things to talk about, so we probably won't wait till the calendar date. We'll probably ask whoever the chair is to pull a meeting together sooner.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments, or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I may comment, I think this is an excellent opportunity to support our new administrator and his recommendation and to, you know, utilize his experience and his knowledge that he's bringing to the county to make some positive changes, so I would vote in favor of this.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor by show of hands, it is unanimous. All right, the next item we have is executive session. It's an executive session for 30-4-70 subsection A of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended 1976. It is discussion of negotiations instant to a proposed contract arrangement and proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations, including the assertion against the agency of any claim. And these are the opioid litigation in the Kavanaugh track. Is there a motion that we go into executive session?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Airwood. Is there a second? By Mr. Livingston. All in favor by show of hands. Since Mr. Hip is zooming in, we're going to have to ask everyone to step out so that we can have our executive session.
Ms. Hip?
Mr. Head.
All right, do we have a motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Ms. Airwood is their discussion. All in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hill, it carries unanimously. All right, county council went into executive session for the reasons stated prior to going into executive session, no action was taken. Would there be any motions based on the information we received in executive session?
I make a motion that we authorize our county administrator to do any proper paperwork needed to finish the opioid litigation paperwork and file whatever filing we need to do.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reader is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. All right, appointments. Anyone have appointments? Public comments. No one had signed up for public comments. Is anyone here that would like to make public comments? Hearing none. Comments or requests from our county administrator?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. I wanted to propose a budget planning session with council and thought I'd take this time to nail down a date. I've been kind of putting together a possible agenda for that and I'll get it on paper and share with the chairman and vice chairman as soon as possible. But was thinking about your schedules and we can certainly be available on a Sunday, um, excuse me, on a Saturday. We could do partially a couple hours on a Friday afternoon and then pick up on a Saturday morning, or we could do Thursday afternoon and part day on a Friday. But I just wanted to be respectful of your schedules and see if you had a time maybe the first or second week in February that we could spend about six hours on strategic planning, budget planning. I've got a lot of information from the questionnaires that went out, want to put that together and share it with you and present some other urgent matters that you need to be briefed on. And so we'll take that opportunity to give you a lot of information as we go into budget season and use part of that time for information and part of the time to try and nail down some priorities for this coming fiscal year.
Okay. Based on that, I would ask that you kind of let our county administrator know within the next day or so what your availability would be for those times and then we can kind of work around what's going to work best for everybody.
Yes, sir. That'd be great. I'll follow up. And we're looking at either the fourth and fifth or the eleventh and 12th. And then just another piece of good news, I want to compliment finance staff, especially Karen Bremer and Debbie Cromer. We received a letter from the DOR on the CPST audit and they found everything in compliance. I need a couple of minor recommendations that we'll be looking at closely to implement those recommendations, but certainly good job from staff in getting through that process. Next time we meet, I just want to plant a seed, we're going to bring a budget amendment forward at the first meeting in February. We've got some things that are kind of rising to the top. I'll just give you one example. We're having some retention issues in public works. We've got about four openings and we're not able to recruit anybody and we're not able to retain anybody because of the salary levels. We want to do an interim measure to try and get Mike more fully staffed. So we might bite that off in two bites, but we want to take some action now and then, and so that'll be part of that. And there's a few other issues that we need to clean up in that budget amendment as well. So you'll see that in February. One other thing on the rental facilities, after consulting with our public safety director and reviewing the numbers from DEHEC on the virus, I've decided to postpone any rentals at this time. That's based on this, I'll just give you a real briefing. In December 5th through the 18th, in a 14-day period, Newbury County had 123 coronavirus cases. That has grown consistently since December 5th and as of the 17th of January, our seven-day total is 1,441 cases. So that was as of the 17th. So we went from 123 cases in 14 days to 1,441 cases in seven days. So seeing that significant spike, I did not feel comfortable opening up those rental facilities at this time. If council would direct me otherwise, we would certainly do that. We have experienced some staff out due to COVID and we've experienced some other staff out due to quarantining because of exposure to COVID. So it's been a rough couple weeks across the board. Also on the screen above, we are the third highest case count per capita in the state right now. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. The case count was 1,991 this morning and it's currently at over 2,010. So just today, it's growing that fast. So hour by hour, it's increasing. And then one final note is that we are currently under winter weather watch. So please continue to monitor the weather over the next few days and be safe out there. We do expect that winter weather watch to turn into a winter weather warning, probably Thursday or overnight into Friday. And so Tommy Long will be monitoring that and will send out information as needed. Thankfully, we got through the last winter storm with quite a bit of outages, but public works did not report any significant problems with the roadways or other areas in the county. So we'll pray for the same this round.
Okay. Thank you so much. Comments from council members? We'll start with Mr. Healy.
No, nothing.
Mr. Livingston?
Just thanks to all those who went out in the weather and whether it's our first responders, whether it's our co-op people, all of those who actually provided for it. As you mentioned earlier, just please keep Major Danny Gillum's family in your prayers because he was such a mainstay for this county over many, many, many years. And congratulations on the CPST results because I know it's always tough to manage all that stuff.
Ms. Airwood?
Just what he said. I hate to repeat the same thing, but that's kind of what was in my heart too is...
Reverend, Honorable Reverend Scurry.
We do want, we do want, thank our county administrator for working with us. And I thank you very much for your open door policy, to us a date to work with you and to all the council. I appreciate you for opening your door like that. That's my first time being a part of that. And as we go forward this year, we want to pull closer and closer together. You get closer to us, we all will have one great family together. But I do, I beg y'all that one of our former deputies lost his life, Danny Gillum, well-known upstanding citizen of Newbury, with my around the county. Keep that family in your prayers. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reader?
Yeah, I would like to thank the county and everyone for their participation in the MLK program on Monday. We didn't get to have the parade on Sunday, but hopefully next year we'll be able to do the parade and all the events necessary to celebrate the MLK celebration. I do appreciate the county and our county administrator walking hand in hand with everybody as well as our chairman who was at the event on Monday. And I hope to get everybody else's participation as we grow within the next couple of years as far as doing the MLK program. I just want to thank everybody.
Mr. Hill?
I want to kind of duplicate one thing Buddy said. I was one of those unfortunates, if you want to call it that, that I was without power 12 hours on Sunday. And then low and behold, I was without power for another eight hours on Monday. But what I have to do is just shout out to utility workers, in my case, it was a city of Newbury, utility workers, because they worked on Sunday under the most treacherous conditions to restore power and then after having worked all day and most of the night on Sunday, they had to come back out on Martin Luther King holiday day that should have been another off day and worked all day and into the night again. You know, just wonderful servants in the utilities to support our community and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just as briefly as I can be, I would echo the public safety and utility, but also our citizens. We had citizens that went without power for 36 hours at some, in some places. And so we take it as such a luxury item and the truth is, it can be snapped in a minute. So I do shout out to our public safety and our utility workers and for our citizens that have had such a hard time. Mr. Reader, I want to commend you on the Martin Luther King Day, what a blessing that was. I know how much hard work you put into that. And Mr. Glazier, I text you immediately after, that's exactly what we were looking for for our county administrators. I appreciate you being there and being part of that and showing your support for both that event and being part of the community. And so I'm grateful to both of you. It was frigid to say the very least and so, but we survived and so thank you for a well-done event and thank you, Mr. Reader, for all you do to pull that together. No tell how many hours you put into that, so we're blessed by that. Appreciate the outstanding audit by our finance folks, way to go. And so we're proud of you. And then Danny Gillum was like a brother to me. I'll be taking, speaking at his services on Saturday and I just ask that you keep his family. There'll be never, ever, ever be another Danny Gillum who treated people right, did the right thing and just was a good man all the way around. So this county has lost a good one, I promise you. All right, having said that, future meetings. We are going to reschedule the public safety and courts committee and public works and planning pending our new committee system and we'll get those committee assignments to you, Mr. County Administrator, so that you can have those. So the next official meeting will be county council on February 2nd and county council on February 16th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy. Second by Mr. Livingston. All in favor by show of hands. It is unanimous and we stand adjourned. Livingston, all in favor by show of hands. It is unanimous and we stand adjourned.